If we stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance. May we bow in an attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly father, thank you for the night of rest and for this another beautiful day in Washington County. Lord, we pray that the things we do and say are pleasing unto you and of service to those around us. And lord, just guide us, direct us, use us for that purpose, use us to serve others. Lord, have mercy upon us. We pray for our schoolteachers and the awesome responsibility that they have, the many thousands, tens of thousands of students. We pray for their safety and their well-being throughout our community. Lord, have mercy. Lead, guide, and direct us, I pray in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, call the meeting officially to order. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes for October the fourteenth, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, five oh. Thank you very much. Next item is commissioners' reports and comments. Commissioner Wagner, you want to go first?
Good morning. Since the last meeting, after the last meeting, I think it was the twenty-first, wanted to thank the Board of Education for hosting us, for the groundbreaking for the new elementary school out on Downsville Pike at the board office. Great location. And also, we hosted Clear Spring that evening for their meeting. And I want to thank Clear Spring's attendance and their input on any issues they may have had. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Leatherman?
Thank you, John. Good morning. Just a couple points this morning to make. Saturday, October twenty-fifth, ninety-eighth Annual Alsacia Clubs' Mummer's Day Parade. And the county was able to participate with our float, which celebrates two-hundred-and-fifty years of Washington County. We've already started the celebration, although next year is our birthday, but not only our birthday, but our nation's birthday. So, really nice parade, well done to the Alsacia Club. Congratulations on another successful year. Another parade in the county in Hancock on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, at seven P. M. The Rotary Club in Hancock, once again, their seventy-eighth parade. They did a wonderful job, and I was able to participate.
You may be nervous, be bopping back between the crowd shaking hands.
I was told I was the only person in the parade with a tie on.
Of two thousand people, I heard you, the only one had a tie.
I was the only one with a tie. But Commissioner Klein and I participated, and it was a lot of fun.
We said that was fine, not.
It was. It genuinely great, small-town parade and a lot of fun. Glad we were able to be there. Yesterday morning, Local sixteen-oh-five, the International Association of Firefighters, Hagerstown, had their thirteenth annual, they refer to it as Operation Warm. And they distribute winter coats to children in need. They held it at Salem Avenue Elementary School. And a side note, I got to compliment Salem Avenue Elementary School. What a nice facility, well-cared-for, they're doing a great job there. The teachers are warm and receiving. I stood out front for fifteen, twenty minutes and watched the children arrive, and it was just a really good facility. The teachers are performing well, it was great to see. So, to the IFF Local sixteen-oh-five, nicely done, thirteenth year, great job, guys and girls, well done. And finally, once a firefighter, always a firefighter. I've got to remind everybody, it's that time of year, please test your smoke detectors. They work wonderfully, and please talk to your family members, plan your escape, and plan a meeting place outside for accountability. So, that's all I've got this morning, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, President Barr. I'd just like to remind everyone that next Tuesday is Veterans Day, and we will not be having our meeting that day, but there are a number of events that, you know, are going to be held in the county through which we will acknowledge the service of our veterans, those who have served in the past and those who are currently serving, and show our gratitude. Few of the events in the county, Marty Snook Park at nine A. M. next Tuesday, Morris-Frock American Legion at eleven A. M., Sharpsburg Town Square has a ceremony also at eleven A. M. And then the Vietnam Veterans Monument has an event at eleven A. M. in City Park. And then in the afternoon, at two P. M. at the Veterans Park in Smithsburg, there is a ceremony to acknowledge the service of our veterans. And, you know, I would note that Randy is a veteran.
As you.
As me, yep, yep.
And Randy Leatherman.
What service were you, remind me?
Air Force.
Air Force.
Hundred-sixty-seven.
I always say this, I can't, I can't keep myself from saying, no, I will keep myself.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, say it, Derek.
There are many of us in the older services, Army, Marines, Navy, that say the Air Force is really not a military service. It's more of a club, it's more of a club.
Aren't the gates of heaven guarded by the Marines?
I enjoyed my twenty years of membership in the club, Derek.
I know, I know.
No offense taken, my friend.
It's service rivalries, okay? And by the way, Army did beat Air Force Saturday pretty soundly.
By the way, while we're picking on each other here a little bit, having some fun this morning, Commissioner Klein and I overheard a comment in the Mummer's Parade, something about a certain commissioner being his favorite. And I'm like, we're lucky we don't have an empty chair here this morning, because I looked at Commissioner Klein, I said, he needs to go overboard.
What John is saying is, is during the Mummer's Day Parade, I saw Commissioner Wagner, and I said, there's my favorite commissioner. And I had two other commissioners with me, and they were offended, so.
But one commissioner received some french fries from someone in the audience.
Yeah, and he didn't share them either.
And then I asked, how long do I have to be a commissioner before I get french fries? And the answer was, at least six more years.
Yes. In your second elected term. Commissioner Klein, you're up. That's meant to be a compliment as well.
You're up.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to repeat a couple of things. Thanks to the school board for the groundbreaking of the new school. I just confirm, we have eighteen million dollars in that project to help the school board, so that's one of the things that we do for education, eighteen million dollars to a new school. And also, I did attend the union or the sixteen-oh-five code thing yesterday, and what was so important about that, many of our new D. S. employees are part of that membership, so we, the county is also involved with that union project to keeping kids warm. So, kudos to sixteen-oh-five and our employees for all those who were participating in that. And I did attend the Potter's Bowl one Sunday night, it's like the fifteenth straight year that they've, or no, twenty-some years they've been doing that. It benefits the community free clinic, well-attended at the Elks Lodge, probably close to six-hundred people. Saturday night, I attended a ceremony honoring Lou Scally's, the distinguished citizens award from the Mason Dixon District of the Shenandoah Area Council Scouts. If you know Mason Dixon and the Shenandoah Council, I've merged to be one. Lou deserved that award for his commitment to the community over these many years. Then on Saturday afternoon, I attended the STEAM program at H. C. C. Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. Kids were being exposed to these type of items for their career choices. Parking lots were packed out there for that, so a very good turnout. I also went out last week to the highway section, out the eastern section and central, and watched them begin their storm preparation, checking the spreader, salt spreaders, and everything that they need to have ready in working order prior to any snowstorms. And what was interesting, we probably have six to eight vehicles that are eighteen years old in the county plowing. There's a high maintenance on them every year. And one of the obstacles, it takes up to twenty minutes to hook that plow to that eighteen-year-old vehicle, which means before every time they use it, they have a maintenance security check to make sure all those different hoses and connections are there for the safety. But on our brand-new twenty-twenty-five Mac, it took less than five minutes. The purpose of me saying that is let the taxpayers know that our highway guys are already preparing for winter and getting things ready, making sure things aren't, are in working order the day of that storm when we need to get to work and travel safely. So, thank you to the highway department for their preparation. Also, the two-hundred-and-fifty float was a big success in Funkstown in the Mummer's Parade. I was hiking on a trail this past Saturday, and two people walked by and said, you were on the two-fiftieth float. They noticed that float. So, thanks to everybody who involved in constructing the float, promoting the float, the commissioners, administrator, everybody who's in support of that project, it's turning out to be a big success. I also attended our trunk-or-treat program at H. C. C., which was sponsored by our Sheriff's Department and our Rec. Department. I left there about six-thirty to attend another event, and there was over a thousand people in line. But the best thing about it, you see the family, kids creating memories and being around our uniformed officers and changing that opinion that our officers are mean guys, and they are all really nice people. And I, I think everybody there had a good time. One last event I went to was the Ag Expo Annual Meeting. Commissioner Barr joined me at that, gave a report on the Ag Expo, which continues to be a success, guiding our youth through the market sale program and showing, displaying their animals. When you think America's falling apart, go to an Ag Expo meeting and see and hear about the number of kids who are participating in agricultural-type events, along with our four-H people, which I understand there's two-hundred-and-fifty kids involved in our four-H program. But one of the highlights of the Ag Expo banquet dinner was the recognition of Ad Fulton for his many years of contribution and participation down at the Ag Center and the most recent sizable donation that will continue to fund projects and facilities down there. So, a special note of recognition to Ad Fulton and his family for recognizing the importance of our Ag Expo and Ag Center down there on Sharpsburg Pike. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. And I'll just add on to that, being present at that dinner, the Foltons have been a true friend of the Ag community and particularly there at the Ag Center and the Ag Expo, the weekly, week-long event every year. And if you think that it doesn't take much to put a program on like that, you ought to look at their three-page budget breakdown. Every line item is accounted for, every detail from hauling cattle in to hauling cattle out, the rental of the tents and equipment and food, and the list just goes on and on and on, and it is rather overwhelming that all that is pulled together. And, you know, it's an annual event, and it's very successful. And continue to keep them in your thoughts, because it is quite an undertaking, it's a year-long process for a one-week event, so it's very much involved with that. One other thing that wasn't mentioned that I had the pleasure of attending was through my connection with the local Salvation Army. They held, they held on Friday night their, what they call their Hallelujah Carnival, and it was held up at the gymnasium in the West End, very well-attended, and, you know, probably the most organized and well-behaved children. I never saw so many children that were appreciative, thank you, they helped clean up afterwards, the games that took, rolling a ball and knocking things down and different things they were doing, they, they would not just throw the ball and then run, they would go over and help set up for the next ones. And it was, it was very well-attended and very well-organized, and hats off to the, the new majors in town and a very successful Salvation Army Hallelujah Carnival, so. Any other comments, commissioners, anything we've overlooked? Next week is a big week with Veterans Day on Tuesday, which has already been mentioned, and I know there's a number of wreath ceremonies, there's a major presentation up at Clear Spring High School that's held every year, so there'll be a number of things going on on Tuesday. With that, we'll move right into staff comments. First up is Andrew Eschelwin.
Good morning, commissioners, Andrew Eschelwin, Director of Public Works. I'm here regarding a letter to be sent to the Secretary of Transportation on behalf of the commissioners regarding the M. Dot. Project prioritization. And what that is, is essentially the scoring system by which the counties are required to submit requests for funding in, in the state's consolidated transportation program for capacity-enhancing projects. That's transit, roadway. So, really, we're talking about I. D. One, right? The state has this process, and Scott Hobson Engineering normally initiates that. And they are coming up with a new framework, and we have been going through several meetings with the state as they sought input. So, there's three things I want to touch on in the letter, and again, this will come up in the county's legislative priority letter that will be discussed with the delegation tomorrow as well. So, the first which we support is the, the planning and feasibility phase. It's often very difficult to find the resources to do that initial planning work, so the state has acknowledged a support and a clearer process for that initial step, so that's good. The second thing, though, is their scoring projects, essentially with no regard to the mode, by mode I meaning transit and highway projects are lumped together in the same scoring system. And so, you know, looking at the numbers, and Scott's gone behind those, really, we just don't see a way that you can put a project like I. D. One where there's a concern with freight mobility, safety, in a, in a similar scoring system with, say, a transit capacity project that's going to look at different factors like reducing single occupancy vehicles, greenhouse gas emissions, those are scoring criterias. They're just incompatible. I think what will happen is I. D. One will never be at the top of that scoring list for how they select projects, and so we view that as a concern. And the third is, there's no account for regional diversity. Maryland is a diverse state, both in terms of geography, demographics, all these things and transportation needs, and so having a system that can account for regional variation because something that may be important in an urban area could be vastly different in a rural area, and they're not really taking that into consideration. So, those are essentially the three talking points in the letter, and with your support, we could send that to the secretary.
Consensus?
Any questions?
Are we also communicating those same points to our delegation?
I believe so, and Zach, this, this is our, on our.
It's on our legislative priorities list, and I will go over that tomorrow with the delegation.
This, the concern about the scoring system.
Yes, that is on the list.
Correct, and we, we had a, a meeting again, Jim Kirchvoll's been involved, so he's been acting as a liaison as well on this.
You have my support.
Do we have consensus? I see heads nodding five oh.
Thank you.
And once the letter's signed, I'll also hand out a copy of the letter tomorrow to our delegation.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, next up, County Administrator Michelle Gordon.
Thank you. I also have a couple of letters of support, and the first is from the town of Keydiesville. They are applying for a Sustainable Maryland Action Grant to create a mural at Taylor Park. The mural will celebrate Keydiesville's history and showcase native plants and trees, providing both educational and artistic value. No funds are being requested of the county at this time, I just need a consensus.
All right, okay.
Next letter of support is for the Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. They're applying for a grant to the Maryland Department of Health, it's called the Maryland Professional and Volunteer Firefighters Cancer Screening Grant Program. The board is preparing, is prepared to offer administrative assistance as needed or required to facilitate the successful application administration of the grant program and to fulfill any reporting requirements. No other funds are requested at this time from the commissioners.
Yes.
Jerry, I'm okay.
Yes. Are you good? Okay?
All right, thank you. Last item, or not last item, but we received a request from Jim Kirchvoll with Greater Hagerstown Committee, Washington County Community Coalition regarding twenty-twenty-six legislative priorities. Last year was the final year of funding for the George Edwards Fund, which was used to provide grants to economic development projects in Washington County, Garrett County, and Allegheny County. The George Fund has received approximately forty million dollars over the four years that the delegation members were included from all three western Maryland counties. So, this year, we would like to include a legislative priority to include that funding or continue that funding of ten million dollars for the George Edward Fund. Over the past four years, Washington County's economic development projects have received about fourteen million of that forty million from the George Fund, and those include projects in Hagerstown for Jameson Door, the Hub City Live Venue, as well as in Boonesboro, Williamsport, Hancock, Fort Ritchie, Meredith's Medical School, Hagerstown Community College, and Pittsburgh Institute of Aeronautics. So, we'd like your support to add that to our priorities tomorrow.
I support.
The legislative meeting that we have tomorrow scheduled with our delegation, a pre-legislative forum, I do want to point out that the meeting time for Washington County's items was changed from one-thirty to one-fifteen for anybody who wishes to attend. We did send out a revised meeting notice regarding that change. In the last two weeks, I've had meetings with Maryland Appropriations Committee, attended Maryland Theater Event, also met with Budget and Finance Affiliates, with Formaco, had a meeting with our community partners regarding our food resources. I also attended the groundbreaking ceremony at the Board of Education for the new Downsville Pike School. Last two items that I have are two recent OMA opinions that I'd like to read. First one is nineteen-two ninety-eight, two thousand twenty-five. The opinion came in on October the twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-five. The complainant alleged that the Washington County Board of County Commissioners violated the Open Meetings Act by failing to adequately describe an agenda item and by removing him from a meeting. The complainant first alleged that a meeting was intentional, I'm sorry, the meeting agenda was intentionally vague as to the scope of the hearing. The act requires, before a public, public body meets in open session, that it make available to the public the agenda containing known items of business or topics to be discussed. A description needed, need not be particularly detailed. The complainant alleged that the county board illegally omitted public comment from these descriptions, and he asserted that public comment used to always be on the description after explaining what the hearing was about. He asserted that this mislabeling on the August twenty-sixth agenda was intentionally vague to suppress citizen participation. The board asserted that the descriptions are consistent with past agendas, and any reasonable individual, including the complainant, would recognize that the public hearings included a public comment portion. The OMA Compliance Board does not think that the agenda was required to say so. The relevant part of the act requires only that the agenda reflect the items of business or topics to be discussed. They believe that the agenda language quoted satisfies this requirement, thus they found no violation on this allegation. The complainant also alleged that at the August twenty-sixth meeting, while looking for a place to sit and walking where citizens were allowed to walk, he was improperly thrown out of the meeting. A video recording of the meeting shows the complainant was removed for being disruptive. The board president told the complainant that he was out of order and said, you're done, please leave. The complainant continued his behavior, then argued with the board president about whether he should be allowed to continue addressing the body. The board president repeated, please leave. The complainant apparently left the room, and then about five minutes later, he returned walking behind where county staff were addressing the county board and raised his arm, extending his middle finger toward the body. About three minutes later, he did this again, prompting the board president to bang his gavel and tell the complainant to please leave and don't come back. Based on this record, we conclude that the county board properly removed the complainant from the meeting. A public body may remove an individual if the presiding officer determines that the behavior of an individual is disrupting an open session. A public body has unquestioned power to prohibit any disturbance at its meetings. Thus, we find the county board did not violate the act by removing the complainant from the meeting. The second one is nineteen-dash-two ninety-six from two thousand twenty-five. It also came in on October the twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-five. The complainant alleged that the Board of County Commissioners violated the act by preventing an individual who's removed from a morning meeting on June third, two thousand twenty-five, from attending a different meeting later that evening. Because we are not a fact-finding tribunal equipped to resolve such disputes, we are unable to resolve this complaint, thus we find no violation of the act occurred. And that's everything that I have today.
Okay, anything, anything else? Okay, moving right along then, under tab one, in your binders, end-of-year FY twenty-five budget adjustments to the Washington County Board of Education's general fund budget. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, commissioners. Good morning, Ms. Gordon. Jeff Crew, Chief Operating Officer, Washington County Public Schools.
Good morning, Eric Sisler, Executive Director of Finance for Washington County Public Schools.
Commissioners, the matter we're bringing this morning is the final end-of-year budget adjustments for the Washington County Board of Education's fiscal year two thousand twenty-five general fund budget. As I make you aware of every time we come for these adjustments, of course, the annotated code requires that local school systems reforecast revenues and expenses and make necessary changes to the budget. Any of those changes that cross categories as defined by the Maryland State Department of Education have to come before the, the Board of County Commissioners for final approval. The document you have in front of you reflects the final ending status of expenses, both above budget and below budget, related to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five operations of the Board of Education and Washington County Public Schools. This matter was reviewed with our board during discussion on work session on October seventh of the final annual financial report for the year and was approved by the Board of Education at their October twenty-one meeting. We're happy to answer any questions you have, but I will note that the end-of-year shows a surplus of four-point-eight million dollars for Washington County Public Schools, which is approximately one-point-four percent of the general fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Here we have a motion and second for approval, as submitted. All in favor by saying aye. Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, under tab two, is optional fourth early voting center for Washington County. Barry Jackson, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Barry Jackson, Director of the Washington County Board of Elections. At the October fourteenth Board of Elections meeting, the Board of Elections selected our three required early voting centers. Those are the Hagerstown Library, Boonesboro American Legion, and the Clear Spring American Legion. And then we also selected a fourth optional site, which is the Washington County Election Center on Virginia Avenue. We're here to seek approval for that fourth. In accordance with election law, we do have funding for that fourth optional site approved in the budget for FY twenty-six. So, seeking approval and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Barry. If it's okay, I'd like to start. I think the Board of Elections understood that we were fully supportive of having the max number of. understood that we were fully supportive of having the max number of sites so that we could get the opportunity to vote to as wide a number of people as possible. And so I'm gonna start and ask a couple of questions here. What's the best facility that we have in the county for election processing, for voters to show up? What's the one that is the best facility?
Well, certainly the most popular is the Election Center on Virginia Avenue.
Okay. I think it's more than the most popular. Let me go through some questions then. Which one has better parking, the library or Virginia Avenue site?
Virginia Avenue's parking is right out front. You can walk right in the building. So whereas the library's parking is a little farther of a walk, there are plenty of spaces, just a little farther of a walk to get into.
Which one has better handicap access and doesn't have to use elevators or stairs?
The Election Center is all one level.
Which one provides for more electioneering opportunities?
I mean, we certainly have a 100-foot permanent mark out on the parking lot at the Election Center. There's plenty of room at the library as well for electioneering in the backside. It's not so much on the front side.
I think that as a former candidate, one clearly supersedes the other, and that's Virginia Avenue, for the number of candidates that want to put out signs and access, being able to greet people, et cetera, without running into problems with election officials. So what is the Virginia Avenue site designed for?
Well, it's the Election Center for Washington County, so all things elections, as well as we have our offices there, our warehouse there, and we also have the early voting center that was built there.
Does the Virginia Avenue site basically overlay the same population group and concentration of population as the library?
Almost exactly.
Yep. Does it cover the same historically underserved communities?
The five-mile circle would indicate that, yes.
Yes. So both basically identical, okay. Which one is easier to get to if you're traveling in from anywhere in the county?
Well, I mean, I guess that depends on where you're traveling from. If you're in the city and you need to get to an early voting center, then the library would be easier to get to. However, the Election Center is conveniently located on a major crossroad within the county.
Major crossroad accessible from 81, coming in from the city on Virginia Avenue, coming down outside from Williamsport, down Virginia Avenue, Downsville Pike, coming from the east, et cetera, west, et cetera. So it's, doesn't have the congestion or the parking. Does the, which one is perceived as more secure by the population?
I can't answer that. I wouldn't know how the population thinks it is.
Well, I would submit to you that the population overwhelmingly thinks that there is security problems, homeless, drug use, and bad behavior. That's not only occurred there outside with people that hang out outside, but it has occurred inside, as John Barr and I have both witnessed, you know, whether it's in the bathrooms or in the stairwells or in the elevators. So the only difference between the library from, and the Virginia Avenue site, I think if you were to scale it, Virginia Avenue is a better site for almost all of these. I know you're trying to defend the library site. What makes the library something that the Board of Elections wanted?
I think they felt like it met the needs of the disadvantaged communities of Hagerstown better than the Election Center. It allows folks who live downtown to easily access early voting by walking to it. It's also a well-known building within the county, not just in Hagerstown. Everybody knows where the library is, so.
Everyone knows where Virginia Avenue is too, and it's probably more accessible in many ways. But, okay. What, did the conversation about we want it inside the city limits, regardless of how it meets the other criteria, come up?
No, I don't believe that ever came up during the meetings that it necessarily had to be within the city limits of Hagerstown.
Did it come up at all that they wanted it in the city limits? Because there were, was a demand signal from some very activist groups that they wanted it in the city limits?
Possibly, but that wasn't the motivation of the Board of Elections. The motivation of the board was to follow election law. And so election law, a new election law was passed this year that made it obvious to us that it needed, there needed to be more concentration of early voting centers in an area of high density of voters as well as disadvantaged communities. So that's why we always, when we looked at possible early voting sites, we wanted to make sure we looked within Hagerstown as an additional.
So you have one within Hagerstown, one in Clear Spring, and one in Boonsborough. And if there's not an approval for a fourth one, you don't have a concentration of them there. And I didn't see anywhere where there was a requirement to have multiple, multiple voting sites within an area that's already adequately covered. Can the library handle 7,000 people, 8,000 people coming in to vote if there is not a Virginia Avenue site operating?
It can. It is a large room. It's almost the same size as the room in on Virginia Avenue. Another nice thing about the library is that if there is inclement weather, we can cover hundreds of people in the library in line to get in. So that is one advantage of the library. But yes, plenty of parking, although I would agree, the parking's a little farther away. You gotta walk a little bit from the parking lot. But the room's plenty large enough to handle 7,000 voters coming in.
So I heard from witnesses as well as from people on your board that the issue was about having it within the city limits. That said, is Hopewell Road within the city limits?
I don't know. I don't...
It is. Okay. Is Tech High School and over by Walmart and where they've been annexing across the highway, is that within city limits?
Tech High is not.
But they've annexed where the warehouses are, and they're going across, they've gone across the freeway already.
I wasn't aware of the data annexed.
Yeah. But that would be within city limits. And if it was within city limits, that satisfies the concentration of population density. Doesn't seem to square for me, but okay. When does the state actually give guidance for the geographic distribution? Because Comar is supposed to have geographic distribution. And if I'm looking at geographic distribution, I would expect one to be in the city or that concentration of population wherever that arbitrary line is at. You got one in Boonsborough, you got one in Clear Spring, and it's, you know, 40 minutes to get to the Election Center from Fort Ritchie. Why not one in Smithsburg that operated very successfully last time?
Those are the three that the board selected. They thought they were...
So if there's no fourth one, if it doesn't get approved, what would the board do?
Then we would just have the three that were selected.
And did they think through that as a way of trying to box us in or box the state Board of Elections in? Because you already had preapproval for a fourth site. It was very clearly communicated.
Perhaps that's what they were thinking when they selected the Election Center.
So you're putting two there then. Has there ever been a throughput problem for getting people through the Virginia Avenue site?
No, we've had lines, but it's always been quick.
Always been quick. Okay. When will the guidance for the fourth site kick in?
From the state?
Yeah. When does the geographic distribution get considered? Because if you have four sites, it should be geographically considered in the distribution. Do you have to go back and consider that?
Right. Well, the new Comar that deals with geographic distribution should be approved by the state board at any moment. In fact, I believe it may have been and now is waiting further approval from the Assistant Attorney General. So I say all that to say that when the state board reviews our early voting sites and rules on them in December, they will take that geographic distribution into account.
Okay. What, when will Comar, will the new rules be out before the state board has to?
I believe they will.
So why don't you wait to make your recommendations and your decisions as the board until after the state has provided its final guidance as four factors of consideration?
Because we're required to submit our election plan to the state board by November 24th, and we wanted to make sure to get in front of the commissioners before that time so we can do the work that we need to do to get it in there on time.
I can understand that. Okay, I appreciate that. It seems like in one way or another, there's the cart before the horse. We're waiting for the rules to make sure that it's equitable so that everyone gets treated fairly across the entire county. And we've made a recommendation that is at least premature in my view, because we should be considering four distributed sites based upon geographic factor also.
Well, I think the four sites, if you take them all in an aggregate, do meet the equitable distribution requirement or consideration, because we have one out in the western part of the county, we have one in the eastern part, southern part of the county. Yes, you know, to your point, you know, folks who live in Cascade are gonna have to drive a while to get to the closest early voting center. Same thing in Hancock, they're gonna have to drive a while to get to the Clear Spring early voting center. So we're always going to have that issue, but we believe that four that we've selected are the best options that we have, even taking equitable distribution into account.
I would disagree. And I think that Smithsburg operated very efficiently last time. I was there like 12 hours a day for, every day. And I saw the numbers and I saw the interest. And having it going forward in the future would have just expanded the awareness of it, okay, and people would have continued to increase their numbers there. But, okay. I'm, I'm not gonna make a motion right now, but I would, I'm sure there are other questions, but I'd like to table our consideration of this.
What's your deadline again? November 24th?
November 24th. However, we need time to get our election plan put together and sent to the state board.
Yeah, the whole thing, you know, it doesn't seem to me like it's done in a deep thought process. I mean, just the fact that Cascade, Smithburg, it's a whole lot harder for voters there to get somewhere than it is for Hagerstown to get to Virginia Avenue. I don't, also the graphic distribution, I understand your timeline, that's what's bothering me, I guess. But they, I mean, what would happen if, is it possible they wouldn't approve Virginia Avenue?
The state board?
Yeah.
No. If you were to approve that today, the state board would approve Virginia Avenue as the fourth site.
If we table it, can we bring it back so they can adequately meet their deadline?
What happens if you don't meet the deadline? What happens then?
We're required by law, so I guess I would be breaking the law, which would make me a criminal.
Our next meeting is November the 18th.
Well, we could consider it on the 18th. Have a vote. You have two paths, I guess. You're not gonna go back and reconsider? The board can't do that, given the concerns that we have?
I can certainly bring that. We'll have our meeting on the 13th.
Could we ask for the Board of Commissioners to come back on the 18th and further explain how they're, how they can respond to some of our concerns?
We could do that.
That would be good, from my view.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We'll plan to bring the Board of Election Commissioners on 11-18 as well. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, under Tab 3, Volunteer Fire and EMS Revolving Loan Fund.
Good morning, commissioners. David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services.
Ole Griffith, Coordinated Volunteer Service.
Commissioners, we're here to discuss proposed modifications to the Volunteer Fire and EMS Revolving Loan Fund. The fund was created by the Board of County Commissioners in 1993 and was intended to assist volunteer fire and EMS companies with the purchase of apparatus, land, facilities, or facility upgrades. The program was developed in 1983, prior to the current-day Division of Emergency Services, which was established in 2001. We have evaluated the structure, the funding mechanisms, and the value of the loan fund in its entirety, discussed that with the county administrator and the chief financial officer. At this point, staff are recommending several modifications to the revolving loan fund, including increasing the maximum loan fund balance, increasing it from its current $1 million of funding to $2.5 million of available funding. Additional recommendations include graduated percentage of maximum loan values, which are contained in the modified documents recommendation. And then modifications to the committee's structure and membership are also included in the recommendation. I don't know if Ole has anything to add to that. If you want, we can go over the percentages in the evaluations and discuss kind of where we are by the recommendations.
So since 1993, it's been in existence. As of today, how much is, money is loaned out?
None.
None?
It's been extremely underutilized, and I think some of that is relative to the fund balance and the way it was distributed previously under the current, or currently under the structure. The $1 million is divided into $700,000 that's available for fire departments, $300,000 was available for...
When's the last time a loan was requested since 1993?
I've been here just short of 10 years, and there hasn't been any in my tenure. Well, I have one currently from Boonsborough, First Post Company in Boonsborough, which we've asked them to hold until we looked at this...
And you're saying they haven't requested because it wasn't enough money? Is that what it was?
I think his...
Well, I mean, a ladder truck's $2 million bucks or better, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. And the fund's not intended to provide all of the funding for that, if you look at the graduated loan structure. But historically, I believe you'll find that the loan, the interest rates that were available in the commercial market were better than these rates. Secondarily, this was best described, the intent of this fund, by a previous CFO and, again, the current CFO. Same thing, is the board wasn't looking in the design of this particular loan fund to be a bank. It's basically an effort in a available way for companies, if they aren't able to secure funding from banks, or if the interest rates go to something that's totally egregious, that there is a mechanism of relief. I don't think the board ever intended this to be truly a mechanism for all departments to come and look to fund their apparatus. Do they want them to use a commercial lending app?
No, it all makes sense to me, but I mean, it's a loan and not a, you know, it's, but what, do you think that'll be utilized now? I'm just curious. I'm not against it, I'm just curious.
I do. I think currently, as I stated, the First Post Company in Boonsborough has a sitting request in for, request in for consideration that we will bring back to you once we, if this is moved forward. The other problem we had is unfortunately the current makeup of the committee. There were one or two of the members that were listed on there that are no longer with us, so the committee couldn't function as a sitting without no appointments.
What kind of, one more question, I'll let you learn. What kind of feedback are you getting from the companies? Is it a good thing for them? I mean, is it something that they might utilize?
Yeah. We did not take this through the association membership at all. But I think, generally speaking, the feedback would be received that it's a positive promotion. I can't speak, this is the first we did the graduated loan value, so that one company wasn't able to take all of the money. And secondarily, there was funding, different levels of funding available for different types of uses. So the loan value itself specific is something new in this area.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, second. We have a motion and a second for approval as submitted. Ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Next item under tab four is First Hosted Company of Boonsborough EMS Transport Unit, Roarsville Fire Station.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services.
Ole Griffith, Division Emergency Services.
George Meyer, President, First Hosted Company of Boonsborough.
Eric Greiner, Second Vice President, First Hosted Company of Boonsborough.
Commissioners, we're looking for a motion to approve the First Hosted Company of Boonsborough to establish EMS transport services from its current substation. Which is located on Maryland Route 67, Roarsville Road, Fire Station Number Eight. The Division Emergency Services received a letter from the First Hosted Company relative to the planned placement of an EMS transport unit within Fire Station Eight. And if EMS transport services are approved under this request, DES would utilize the two existing county employees to cross-staff EMS unit. This basically means they're gonna handle the first call. First Hosted Company has received all appropriate approvals from the Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. And is now ready to move forward with implementation of services, once approved by the Washington County Board of County Commissioners. The addition of EMS transport services to the residents of South County will provide significant enhancements to service delivery within that area. As well as expanding the number of daily EMS transport units that are available throughout the county. The fiscal impact is to be determined, basically fuel and maintenance reimbursement. We don't have any history on that, so that's an unknown number. You have concurrences from myself, the Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. The alternatives could be continued discussions with the First Hosted Company. And then your attachments are the Emergency Medical Services MOU, which we need access, which formally authorizes the items that I just discussed. I'll turn it over to our volunteer coordinator of the First Hosted Company for any other comments.
No, um, back when I was fire chief, uh, we started Station Eight 26 years ago. It's hard to tell. That was always a goal with the people in South County, to have a more efficient, quicker response time in those areas.
Any idea of time savings between the station in Boonsborough and the Station Eight?
Yeah, so I, I believe there's just about a nine mile difference between, uh, what would be Boonsborough and, you know, the town of Gatlin, town of Roarsville. So if you figure in time distance, it can be anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes. And further South County, where typically Frederick Brunswick ambulance would be due, we would be obviously the first to there too. So it would be our, our county employees providing the service to, and volunteers to, to South County on a first due basis.
What is the nearest Frederick County station to provide EMS? It is Brunswick? Is that 19?
Yes.
There's nothing around Burkittsville. Middletown would be the next?
Yeah, you have Brunswick, you have Jefferson, you also have Loudon 626. Sometimes Jefferson County Company.
Is 626, what is that?
Loudon.
That is Loudon, but what, what's the?
Nearsville.
Nearsville, okay, gotcha.
They moved it farther down the street.
Gotcha.
My visits to Heim's store over the years, Gary Heim's has been, other than the pond, this is one of the top topics he's expressed that people in South County want. And he's kind of a, I would say the mayor or spokesman of South County, because it's a gathering place and he hears the conversations. And this is something that's been asked for for over two decades, according to Gary, to, to be done. So, um, I'll, I'm gonna support this. So, um, thank you for your efforts, all of you who've done this.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item under tab five is Bid Award PUR 1771, Water Sewage Plan Update.
Good morning, Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Joe Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning.
The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the Bid Award PUR 1771. Moved to award the procurement of a water sewage plan update to Rommel Klepper and Cal RK&amp;K out of Baltimore, Maryland. For a total sum cost of $51,500. This is also contingent on the final approval of the contract by the county attorney's office. The awardee will draft a water and sewage master plan that conforms to the requirements of the environmental article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as well as two marks. The draft should include, the draft shall include all analysis, maps, charts, models, drawings, as required by the State of Maryland law. All draft and final plans will be reviewed by county municipal staff, the Maryland Department of Environment, the County Planning Commission, and local elected officials. The invitation to bid was posted on September 10th, 2025, on the county's online bidding site, as well as the eMaryland Marketplace Advantage site. Eleven companies downloaded the document, and on October 8th, two proposals were received. Both, both proposals were considered responsible, responded by the committee, and prices were open. Funding is available for this plan update in the capital improvement budget.
I have any concern that one price is five times the other?
I don't understand how that happened. I don't know if they were clear about the scope of work. They were at the pre-bid meeting, and everybody got the same information, so we're unsure why.
But the 50, the price that we're looking at, you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, that sounds very reasonable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second on the floor for, in favor, as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Thank you, ladies. Next item under tab six is Sole Source Procurement PUR 1782, 250th Anniversary Coin.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Zainya, we are Director of Public Relations and Marketing.
The next recommendation is a sole source procurement PUR 1782. Moved to authorize the purchase of 250th Anniversary Coins in the amount of $69,600 for 4,000 sets from Everything Promo out of New York. In the year of 2026, the United States of America and Washington County will both celebrate the historic milestone of their 250th anniversaries. The coins will be available for resale through the online store launched by the Washington County Public Relations and Marketing Department. As well as at the July 4th, 2026 celebration honoring both America and Washington County's anniversaries. Section 1 through 106.2A, 2 and 4 of the Code of Public Laws of Washington County, Maryland. States that a sole source procurement is authorized and permissible when the compatibility of equipment, accessories, or replacements of parts is paramount to the consideration. And a sole source vendor's item is to be procured for resale. These coins were previously purchased for distribution. Events held by other municipalities.
When, how long ago was that?
About a year ago, we purchased the coins to distribute to the towns. So each town got about 1,500 coins. The idea behind the coins were to get citizens out to the different towns to participate in their events that they're having in recognition of the 250th. So they will be giving out coins that we previously purchased, and citizens can go around Washington County and collect the set. And we will have our coin, as well as the box that the set comes in, available for anyone that is trying to complete the set. They won't have to purchase that. These coins, though, if someone is not able to get around the county to attend all of the events and collect the set, they will be able to purchase them. And that's what this is for. And this request does require four of the five commissioners to move forward. There is funding available for this purchase in FY26 budget.
Discussion, motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion in second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under tab seven, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase 25-0217. Debtbook Debt and Lease Management Products and Services for the Department of Budget and Finance.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Zane Garrett, Deputy Director of Budget and Finance.
The last recommendation I have for you is the Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase INTG-250217. Moved to authorize by resolution the approval for the purchase of debt and lease products and services for a cloud-based software for the Department of Budget and Finance. From Debtbook out of Charlotte, North Carolina, at the contracted price of $158,875. This is for a period of five years, based on a contract awarded by AMIA. This is also contingent only on the final approval of the agreement by the county attorney's office. The software is required to manage countywide lease and subscription assets with the implementation of governmental accounting standards. Statement Number 87 and 96, which took effect in fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Additionally, countywide debt is tracked in Debtbook. The software is utilized in preparation of annual budgets as well as financial statements. This is a renewal of the existing software that we are currently using. Section 106.3 of the Public Laws of Washington County grants authorization for the county to procure goods and services. Through a contract entered into by another government entity, as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of that contract, and we are doing so with this contract. The county will benefit with the direct cost savings of this purchase due to the economies of scale the contract has leveraged. Budgeted in the operating, oh, it is budgeted in the operating budget for this purchase.
Discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under tab eight, Rescind Bid Award PUR 1772. Which is the Hangar 22 HVAC System Replacement for the Hagerstown Regional Airport.
Good morning, Karen Beckner, Buyer in the Purchasing Department.
Morning, Neil Doran, Airport Director.
The first recommendation we have is to rescind the bid for PUR 1772. Moved to relieve Digital Career Opportunities Worldwide LLC of Middle River, Maryland, from their bid submission dated October 7th, 2025. Without prejudice for the procurement of the Hangar 22 HVAC System Replacement at the Hagerstown Regional Airport. On October 22nd, 2025, the purchasing office received notification from Digital Career Opportunities Worldwide LLC. Requesting to rescind their bid submission for this project. The county accepted bids for this project on October 8th, 2025. The invitation to bid was advertised on the State of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, and the county's new online bidding, online bidding website. The county reserves the right to reject any or all bids and to waive any informality or deficiency in bids received. Whenever such rejection or waiver is in the best interest of the county.
Okay, any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And motion in second to rescind the bid. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Next item then is to follow up to that, under tab nine, Bid Award PUR 1772. Hangar 22 HVAC System Replacement for the Hagerstown Regional Airport.
Karen Beckner, Buyer in the Purchasing Department.
Neil Doran, Airport Director.
The second recommendation we have is Bid Award PUR 1772. Moved to award the Hangar 22 HVAC System Replacement at the Hagerstown Regional Airport contract to the responsive, responsible bidder. MS Johnston Company Incorporated of Hagerstown, Maryland, based on the total lump sum bid of $72,000. The purpose of this project is to replace the rooftop mounted HVAC unit, which is well past its useful life and is experiencing increasing reliability issues. The operations of the tenant require precise control of temperature and humidity to ensure proper results, adhesion, curing, color consistency, and speed of drying for aircraft painting. On September 10th, 2025, the invitation to bid was posted on the county's new online bidding website. And listed on the State of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website. Fifteen persons or companies accessed the document online. And on October 8th, 2025, six bids were received per electronic submittal as shown on the attached bid tabulation matrix. And funds are budgeted and available in the department's FY26 CIP Airport Systemic Improvements line item.
Discussion or motion?
Was this one also considered, was this one the second one in order? And so it just fleet it up? Okay.
Is that just a single unit?
Yes.
Is it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under tab 10, Contract Award PUR 1773 for gasoline and diesel fuel deliveries.
Karen Beckner, Buyer in the Purchasing Department.
Zane Ral, Deputy Director of Highways.
The last recommendation we have is Contract Award PUR 1773. Moved to award the bids for gasoline and diesel fuel transport deliveries under four separate contracts to the responsive, responsible bidders who submitted their lowest bids. Item number seven of the bid will be contingent upon individual departmental requirements. Contract for gasoline tank wagon deliveries to AC&amp;T Company Incorporated of Hagerstown, Maryland. At the unit bidder factor prices as stated in its bid dated October 21st, 2025. Contract for gasoline transport deliveries to Petroleum Traders Corporation of Fort Wayne, Indiana. At the unit bidder factor prices as stated in its bid dated October 21st, 2025. The contract for diesel tank wagon deliveries to AC&amp;T Company Incorporated of Hagerstown, Maryland. At the unit bidder factor prices as stated in its bid dated October 21st, 2025. And the contract for diesel transport deliveries to Petroleum Traders Corporation of Fort Wayne, Indiana. At the unit bidder factor prices stated in its bid dated October 21st, 2025. The following tabulations listed below are made from the bids received on October 22nd, 2025. Based on the bid factor submitted for the contract period that is tentatively to begin on December 1st, 2025, and end on November 30th, 2026. The contracts are for a one-year term with no option to renew. These are requirements contracts, and the county guarantees neither a maximum nor a minimum quantity. The invitation to bid was advertised on the State of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, and the county's new online bidding website. Eight persons or companies downloaded the, the bid document online, and seven bids were received. The bids were evaluated based on the bidder's bid factor. Bids were submitted as per the attached bid tabulation. The contract requirements for the city of Hagerstown, Washington County Public Schools, and Hagerstown Community College are also included in the above recommendations. Those entities will also make their own formal contract awards. And funds are available in various departmental operating budgets for this service.
I had a question. Zane?
Yes.
Okay, Snowplows Operating Diesel, uh, one of our diesel plows is plowing. How many options, how many locations, just regarding distance traveled, does that plow have in the county to refuel?
We would have four.
Okay.
But 99% of the time, whatever district that truck is out of is where.
Okay, and then the same question with gasoline. Same number?
Yeah.
Four also available?
Four counties, and, and we do have a, a small satellite tank on, um, Siling Hill Mountain that are, that are shed there for diesel, only diesel.
Only diesel?
So the trucks that are up in that area don't have to run back to lick and grab.
What size tank's that?
Uh, I think it's a 275, 275 gallon.
So this is just for delivery?
Correct.
So when I see something that says three cents. Per gallon. That's separate from the cost of the gasoline?
Correct, I think that's just.
So if it's a 50,000 gallon tank being delivered or filled, it would be three cents times the 50,000?
Correct, whatever their bid factor was.
And then you have a separate bill that comes in for the gasoline that's separate and apart from this?
Well, it's all, you know, when, when we get that bill, it's all figured in. And I think they use the, the weekly OPUS price plus the bid factor.
But this, this kind, this is just determining who we're gonna choose as the supplier with this baseline delivery cost. The market will fluctuate.
Correct.
But this is the ba, okay, I got it. Thank you.
Other questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item under tab 11 is letter of support, challenge to Maryland Department of the Environment interpretation of minor subdivision.
Morning Commissioners, Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated, the Board of County Commissioners have been approached by a local home builder in the county. They have, this builder has chosen to challenge MDE's interpretation of a minor subdivision. What that really boils down to is that in our rural areas, under the septic tiers law that was adopted, I think in 2012, we are limited to a maximum of seven new residential lots per lot of record, regardless of our zoning regulations. Currently, the way the Maryland Department of Plant, Maryland Department of the Environment is interpreting the law, they're saying that you only get six new lots, plus whatever the remainder is. The developer, excuse me, the home builder, is contending that the remaining lands had an existing development right to it before. The law states that a minor subdivision is seven new lots, therefore there should be a total of seven new lots plus a remainder. They are challenging this interpretation and have reached out to the Board of County Commissioners to see if they would write a letter of support, seeing how this would actually affect all of the citizens in Washington County who wish to develop their properties within the rural area. I don't have anything further to add to that.
Motion to approve, writing a letter of support.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second for support, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you, five oh. Next item under tab 12, reappointment of Jeff Semler to a second term on the planning commission.
Good morning again, Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. I act as liaison to our appointed board of the planning commission. We are recommending, I should say, the planning commission is recommending to reappoint Mr. Jeff Semler to a second five-year term that would run from October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2030. Mr. Semler, as stated, has served on the planning commission for five years. According to the bylaws of the planning commission, the term of each member shall be five years or until his successor takes office. And the county policy states that boards and commission members should be limited to two terms, so we are seeking a reappointment of Mr. Jeff Semler.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second for approval, as submitted, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, five oh. Next item is under tab 13, Potomac Edison Airport easement.
Good morning, Andrew Ashman, Director of Public Works. I'm here seeking a motion to approve the easement and to authorize the execution of the necessary documentation to finalize the easement. The county and the Hagerstown Regional Airport received a state rural development fund grant to extend underground utilities along Airport Road on Airport property, as well as construct a digital sign. Potomac Edison is requesting their standard 10-foot easement over the underground power utility supply and to service the equipment. The conduits and the electrical systems were all designed by the county. However, granting this easement is required for Potomac Edison to provide the service to allow for access of future maintenance and repairs of the system. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second for approval, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item under tab 14 is Smithsburg Wastewater Treatment Plant, new electric service easement agreement.
Good morning, Joe Moss, Deputy Director for Engineering, Department of Water Quality. As you know, we're upgrading the Smithsburg Wastewater Treatment Plant, have been for quite some time now, and it's time to put in a bigger electric service. And today I'm looking for us to execute a new agreement with Potomac Edison so they can maintain their portion of the new service that they'll be installing here in the next few weeks.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, a second.
Ready to vote, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is under tab 15, permits operations manager, Chip Rose, you're up.
Good morning, Chip Rose, Director of Human Resources. Staff is seeking approval to extend an offer to Paula Kaufman for position number 1221, which is the permits operations manager. The offer is a grade 13, step three, at a salary of $33.06 an hour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for approval, as submitted, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you. Next item is under tab 16, recommended overfilling strategy for emergency communication specialists.
Thank you, Chip Rose, Director of Human Resources, again. Staff is seeking approval to develop a staffing strategy for 911 that anticipates the extended training window for our ECS employees, which stands for Employee Communications Specialists. The data shows that it takes 12 months to train a new hire to become proficient as the ECS 1, and a total of 24 months to become proficient as the ECS 3. The turnover rate in 911 on a base of 40 dispatchers is 25% last year. We're asking for approval to overfill the incoming training academies by 10%, which is four important dispatchers.
Question, our turnover is 25%. What's the state or national average? Does it match or equal that?
It varies, but it is high, it's over 20%.
Nationwide.
A lot of turnover in 911.
This would be monitored as well to ensure that they don't go over their budgeted employee sal, or wages and benefits for the number of positions there. This would give them the opportunity to remain fully staffed 24/7 and meet their minimum staffing level requirements based on state requirements.
Yeah, I think it's a necessary step. I think it's an acknowledgement of some of the challenges there. It's a stressful environment, so I recommend approval.
It's not, it's not providing them with additional positions, it's giving them the ability to fill extra when they can.
So we need a motion or just a consensus?
We would need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for approval, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh, thank you. Next item under tab 17, Washington County Mental Health Authority Incorporated, appointments.
Dawn Marcus, County Clerk. On behalf of the Washington County Mental Health Authority, I am requesting a motion to appoint Taisha Clark to serve a first full three-year term from November 1st of 2025 through October 31st of 2028 as a child advocate, and to appoint Jessica McKinley to serve a first full three-year term from November 1st of 2025 through October 31st of 2028 as a citizen-at-large representative. This is not a paid board.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second for approval, as submitted, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, five oh. Item 18, adoption of findings of fact and decision for zoning map amendment, RZ 25-006.
Thank you, President Barr, Zachary Kiefer, County Attorney. Today's recommended motion is to move to adopt the written findings of fact and decision for the zoning map amendment, RZ 25006. The Board of County Commissioners voted to approve by a vote of five oh to request, the request for a zoning map amendment by Fast Gas Company from RT Residential Transition to HI Highway Interchange. Fast Gas Company requested a zoning map amendment for parcels 309, 314, and 766. The planning commission recommended approval after holding a public meeting. The county staff report acknowledged the county's recently adopted comprehensive plan, recommending the subject properties become commercial. Similarly, the staff report did not dispute the logic of the applicant's arguments. So again, the Board of County Commissioners already voted to approve the map amendment, this is just the formal approval of the written decision and findings of fact.
Yeah, and the concurrences are staff and the, and the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
I'd motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for approval, as submitted, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh, thank you. Next item is tab 19, retention of government relations consultant and lobbyist.
Thank you, President Barr, Zachary Kiefer, County Attorney. Today's next recommended motion is to retain Bruce C. Bariano as the county's government relations consultant and lobbyist for the 2026 session of the Maryland General Assembly upon the terms set forth in the proposed retainer letter dated October 20, 2025 from Mr. Bariano. Bruce Bariano has served the Board of County Commissioners as its government relations consultant and lobbyist for the past nine years. Mr. Bariano has offered to again serve in this role for the 2026 General Assembly session for a fixed engagement fee of $10,000 plus a $100 lobbying registration fee. The term of his representation would be the calendar year 2026. And the agreement is provided as an attachment.
So how long has he been being paid the same amount? It hasn't gone up in four, at least four years.
Yeah, I think it's been the same amount the whole entire time.
That's what I understand.
I think it's, it's been persistent.
No inflation adjustments.
I'm going to support this.
I do too.
The factors going on down in Annapolis with money and shortfalls, we need all hands on deck and another set of eyes. And I have spoken to several of the members of our delegation, and Bruce has been instrumental in arranging appointments that the lobby coalition and others couldn't, so.
And I would just like to add on to that, when I'm in Annapolis, at Mako every Wednesday, Bruce is without a doubt all over the place. He's the hardest working lobbyist in Annapolis.
So I would. Motion, Jeff? Motion to support Mr. Bariano.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for approval, as submitted, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh, wonderful. Bruce, Bruce will be happy to hear that. Last item on open session, under tab 20, approval of applications for inclusion on the I-1108 list and ongoing maintenance of the 1108 list.
Thank you, President Barr. The last item I have for you, and Zachary Kiefer, County Attorney, is a bit of a correction in the recommended motion. That was a carryover from the, excuse me, the previous review of the 1108 list. The recommended motion today is to approve the following organizations for inclusion on the community organization funding list, or as commonly known, the 1108 list. The board held its annual public hearing for entities requesting inclusion on the 1108 list, and it is the county attorney's office handles the receipt of the applicants for inclusion. And once the applicants are added to the list, the Office of Grant Management oversees the submission of funding requests. The Office of Grant Management also provides staffing support to the COF Committee, which makes the award recommendations. The Board of County Commissioners has the discretion to add organizations to the list. The following are approved for addition to, or are submitted for the addition to the 1108 list, and they are Senior Services Network, Inc., Mediation First, Inc., Good News Hagerstown, Inc., Global Visions Christian School Broadfording, Fierce Cheer Sponsors, Inc., Congregation Benai Abraham, excuse me, and the Boonsborough Town Alliance.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, but this second paper we have with all the reorganized nonprofit, I would ask that they go over all of them and make, if they don't exist anymore, to remove them?
Commissioner Wagner, they have, and that's what is attached, is the most updated list, but they'll certainly maintain that as well.
There is some that's not in existence anymore on that big list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have any more comments, questions, concerns? Okay, we have a motion, a second for approval, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, five oh. We need a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated to discuss confidential personnel matters and to consider matters that concern proposal for a business to relocate.
Motion to go in close, into closed session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a 15-minute recess. I think there's.